Let's everybody stand, uh, flag's over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic in which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, do I have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Adrian?
Yep.
Do I have a second? Andrea? Uh, discussion, are any changes that people need to? Makes two sets PD, regular. So there's two sets of minutes for approval of minutes, is that what I'm seeing there, Brian?
Yes, there were two sets because there was the, the session we did at six o'clock and the session we did at seven for the regular board meeting.
Okay, I don't think that needs to change, but that's just a good note. And do we have student representatives today?
No. I have an update from them, though they're not here.
Okay, we'll hear it. And do you have a data education things?
Yep.
Okay, um, any other changes?
Can take 10 off because we're just school tour.
Okay, we can take 10 off, so eliminating 10. Okay, uh, with the eliminating of 10, or, uh, can I have an approval of the agenda? I'll raise your hand. Looks unanimous. Okay. Public input and announcements.
And had nothing submitted in writing following that protocol.
Okay.
Nothing coming up.
Uh, hearing none, gonna move on. Uh, we don't need to have a discussion because there was no things. Approval of minutes, uh, can I have an approval for the PD from 4:20?
Make that motion.
Okay, Liz, do I have a second? And actually, I'm gonna give it to Len. He's trying. Okay, uh, any updates for that? I haven't even looked at myself. Bruce, you checking things out, or?
No.
Okay, um, I'm gonna call the vote, all in favor of the minutes for the PD session, raise your hand.
I abstain because I.
And is there anybody who abstains? Okay, Matt and Andrea abstained. Len, did you abstain? Were you there?
You'd been selfing in.
I think he did.
Yes, I was there, actually.
Okay, so. Uh, regular board meeting, can I have a motion? Josh, Liz, okay, there's one and two. Uh, any notes on that? Uh, Ms. Patch over there, thank you. Which we thank you very much for. We always appreciate note takers. Okay, um, hearing no changes, uh, can I call the vote? So all in favor of approving the minutes for the board meeting? Okay, so we have Josh, Andrea.
No, no, I'm.
No, Adrian, Liz, myself. Are either of you approving?
This is.
For the board meeting itself?
The minutes, 4:20.
4:20?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Okay, and abstaining, anybody abstaining? We have Matt and Andrea abstaining. So that's done that, and then student representative update.
Right. Students could not make it tonight. I did have an email from Sidney Mosher, one of our student representatives, and she said they had nothing to report at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, data education items.
Pass this out.
Do you have a digital version to send Len?
I can send Len one, yes.
Okay.
Yes, and thank you because I did not think about that. This is actually the information that I had shared with the full board. So the data itself is not actually new. The little piece that I did add here. Let me grab this and send it to you, Len, really quickly, if you checked your email. Uh, I think Josh had a great recommendation at our last meeting, and that was to try and have some smaller presentations so that we're more consistently talking about data, so that we're not. Yep, go ahead, Bruce.
When you start, when is, what is this data for?
What year?
This is, okay, yep. I will get to that, is that okay? I will get to that, absolutely. Okay, sharing with Len. Josh's suggestion to try and have smaller pieces of data shared more consistently so that we're not just doing one or two big presentations a year, and we have a little more time to digest and revisit and create a, a larger understanding of this data. The S-BAC results are from last year.
Okay. So 2021?
Yes. Uh, these, these STAR scores are from last year as well. So we're looking at a full completed year last year. We're still in the midst of wrapping up our testing this year, so we don't have that data to share with you. Uh, we had just discussed at the last board meeting, doing a larger presentation on those results in the summer, once we have everything. These results I'm sharing with you, and I want to talk about these vocabulary terms a little bit. And that's really what I have for you tonight. Thinking about the difference between a leading indicator and a lagging indicator, I think is important. Uh, we can throw numbers up on a screen, and we can make them look good, and we can make them look bad. That, that's part of the danger with doing this work. The numbers themselves are neutral, but the way you talk about them, you can, you can talk about them in a way that they sound good or bad. I think some of this vocabulary starts giving us a better way to look at the data with the same understanding as a group. So that it's not just my perspective, my opinion, me telling you what to think about the data. It's giving you some information to interpret the data yourself. Leading indicator is something that's very closely related to what's going on. So you might say something like, gosh, my roof is leaking, I should collect some data. A leading indicator would be the water falling on your head. You go, oh, my gosh, it's still leaking, it's falling on my head. You know pretty immediate, immediately and pretty clearly what's happening. Uh, lagging indicator is something that takes a lot more time to actually make sense of, and it's gonna include a lot, a lot more than just what is happening right now. So if you wanted to see if your roof was still leaking, you could try to check the humidity level in your house. The humidity level in your house is gonna be affected by maybe three weeks of your roof leaking, but it's not gonna be as closely tied to what is happening right there in the moment, if that makes sense. A proxy is gonna be an indicator that takes the place of something else. My roof leaking is what I'm talking about. Water hitting my head is a proxy. Humidity level is a proxy. I don't actually have eyes on my roof to know that there's a hole and it's still leaking. I'm using that proxy to tell me if it's leaking or not. So when we look at this data, S-BAC results are a lagging indicator. When our kids get into third grade, they're gonna get a proficiency score on the S-BAC. That's not telling you how they're doing that year in third grade. That's telling you a lot of things about pre-K, kindergarten, first grade, those foundational literacy skills that have been building and compounding. So we're, when we look at S-BAC, it's a little more like looking at the humidity level. It's a little tougher proxy for what's actually happening in our schools. We're casting a much wider net when we look at S-BAC data. You, we try to focus on what happens in school. That S-BAC data also captures what happens outside of school. So it's not a perfect proxy. You may have students who had wonderful daycare programs leading into pre-K. You may have some folks who actually didn't take part in pre-K programs, because that's optional. And these lagging indicators capture all of that information by the time you get to third grade. Our third grade teacher, in other words, is not gonna make our students proficient or not on their own that one year, if that makes sense.
I think it's also important to know, S-BAC itself.
Yep.
Is only done once a year.
Once a year.
In the spring.
And that's part of what makes it a lagging indicator. If, if you look at our STAR scores, so when you look at that local growth, I'm not talking about a proficiency score, I'm talking about growth. And the way we measure that growth is we say, where are our students in the fall? Where did they get to in the spring? We're not talking about if they're proficient or not. We're talking about what happened in one year. So I can look at a third grade teacher and their students, and how they performed in the fall, and how they performed in the spring. And I can say that's more of a leading indicator. So I have a better picture into how education is playing out in that room. Are there still factors outside of the classroom that affect that? Sure. If a student's attendance is incredibly low, are they gonna be making growth? Probably not. But it is more, so it's maybe a better proxy, but it's still not perfect. It's still giving us a slice of what's happening in the classroom, and, and what's working or not working for our students. So, that's installment one of trying to start making sense of data. As I share data with you, uh, my expectation is that I'm gonna continue using this language, and we're gonna keep trying to make sense of, of these numbers in a way that I'm not telling you, this is good, this is bad, but that you can look at it and you can think for yourself, what does this tell us, and what do we need to focus on? Our teachers are engaged in this work, in looking at data, in thinking about the implications, and trying to change their practice. You know, we're not just giving data presentations to put numbers on the wall. Hey, it's a good number, let's pat ourselves on the back. But do we know why it's good? What, what questions do you have with that?
I just wanna clarify, red is growth?
Red is growth, yes.
Len?
Yeah.
And then Bruce has one.
And, and obviously haven't been out of the education profession for a while. How do we tie the proficiency scores to the S-BAC? I, I mean, the district is looking at deficiencies.
Yep.
And then we have this S-BAC score.
Yep.
Whether bad, whatever it may be.
Yep.
What's the link?
So you, and you're talking about classroom proficiency scores, right, Len? So what a teacher might give their student on what they're working on in class?
Sure, that, that's fine, I, I guess.
Yep.
Overall, too, is looking at the proficiency stuff.
Yep. Yep. So that starts to get complicated, because there are things that are happening in our classrooms that mirror what's happening on the assessment. But, so S-BAC versus classroom. So teachers are, are teaching students how to write argumentative essays, let's say. And then on the S-BAC, they're gonna be, there's gonna be a performance task for English Language Arts where they write that essay. So what's happening in the classroom and a score that students are getting on proficiency levels there is gonna be somewhat linked to how they're doing on that S-BAC test. Where things get funny sometimes is that the S-BAC is created in a way that it discriminates scores. Not every student is, trying to think of a good example. Because this might be lesson two, as we talk about percentage versus percentile. So if you give a quiz in class, every kid can get 100%, right? Every kid can't get a hundredth percentile, because that's that bell curve thing where a percentile means you were doing, you were doing better than X percent of your peers. When we look at the S-BAC, we're looking at tests that are designed to give you that spread of the bell curve. Uh, they're gonna select questions on the S-BAC that are hard to answer, because the harder the question is to answer, you get more of a spread and a range of students. If all the questions on the S-BAC, everybody could answer, everybody could get 100%, and the test wouldn't work. Because that's not what it's designed to do. So that classroom proficiency score and that S-BAC score are designed to do two different things. One is to discriminate against and sort students out as much as possible on that bell curve. The classroom one is designed, there's a certain level, and if you can reach this level, you're doing well in class, and you're ready for the next thing in class. So they are, they overlapping content a little bit, but the purpose for them is very different. Does that, does that answer your question a little, Len?
It does, and it presents my next question.
Sure.
Which is, do we want local assessment?
Yep. I think.
On, on our classroom.
Yep.
And our curriculum.
Yep.
Plan that's moving on, or, you know, and, and I think I wanna make this clear. You, you, S-BAC is a, is a picture.
Yep.
It's a snapshot.
Yep.
What happens in the classroom is much more than that.
Yep, absolutely.
And so where do, we need to be careful as board, I guess.
Yep.
And for the community, where are we putting our eggs?
Yep, bingo. Classroom is always more comprehensive than the high stakes assessment. Always, unless you have a classroom that teaches to the test. If you have a classroom that teaches to the test, then you've got a classroom with a very narrow scope, and I, I would argue, we never want a classroom teaching to the test. We want a classroom who has a nice scope, they're diving deeply into a bunch of things that are worth diving into, and that assessment's gonna tell us if we're doing okay or not on that. But your classroom assessment is going to be a better, closer proxy for how your students are doing. And I think that's a good conversation to have with the community. What do we want from our kids when they graduate, and how do we actually measure that? What's the closest proxy we can get to that? If you say we want good citizens, great, the S-BAC's not gonna tell us we have good citizens. Might there be something locally that we can look at and design that would start to tell us that we actually have good citizens? And I think that's, that's where data becomes powerful, and we can talk about accountability, and we talk, we can talk about setting goals. But if we don't know what we want, high test scores don't tell us if we're getting there necessarily. We don't want low test scores, don't get me wrong. Test scores do tell us that we're doing reasonable work, but I don't know if it tells us that we're going exactly where we wanna go. That's S-BAC, but if you talk about, if you look at the, the growth measures and the STAR assessments that we take, and the work that's done there, those are hugely valuable. Because a teacher can do that comprehensive work in their classroom, now we have this incredibly well-designed assessment that we can use to track progress and see if we're going the right way. Because if we just had a teacher designing their own assessments, you know, everybody's doing their own thing and reinventing the wheel, having this objective measure to show growth, I think, is important. Does that, does that make sense? And I know, Bruce, you had a question, too.
No, I'm still thinking.
Okay.
I, I remember when Bernie Peetner was district coordinator. I never saw him in high school.
Yeah.
Except at six or 6:15 in the morning.
Fair enough.
Because he had his books, and he was going out.
Yep.
To the elementary schools.
Yep.
Coordinating.
Yep.
Get them ready for the high school and middle school.
Yep.
And I remember him telling me, so many people were doing their own thing.
Yep.
In the classrooms. I'm teaching Berenstain Bears.
Yep.
Because I've always taught Berenstain Bears. So to get the overall achievement.
Yep.
You can grow breeding Berenstain Bears from here to here.
Yep.
But that may not help you.
Yep.
With the big picture.
Yep.
So, I mean, that's where I think the.
Yep.
Problem is.
And, and part of why that growth data is hugely important, we can look at that classroom that's doing Berenstain Bears, and we can go, wow, amazing things are happening. In this classroom where you're doing something else, we don't see that happening. Let's share what you have here, let's start coordinating what we're doing. We're gonna take the things that work well, we're gonna coordinate those. Because if everybody is going different directions, you know, then you get to seventh grade, and there's no common base for the seventh grade teachers to start working with. So I think that's a good point, Bruce, absolutely.
I don't have a problem with teaching to the test in some regards.
Yep.
I'm not teaching, these are the answers that are gonna be on the test.
Yep.
But if you know you're gonna have to write an essay.
You teach essays.
Then you teach good paragraph writing.
But that's, that, my.
That's not teaching to the test.
Yep, yep, yep.
But it's teaching, that's good preparation for education.
And let me clarify, because I agree with you, Bruce, I agree. If, if argumentative essays are on the assessment, we're gonna learn argumentative essays, absolutely. How argumentative essays are embedded into all the wonderful things you're doing with literature, that's hugely important. We gotta teach the literature embedded with the essay writing. Uh, S-BAC's only looking at the essay writing. S-BAC's only looking at informational texts, really largely. There are some, some other pieces, but, um, we have to have that comprehensive piece that does cover the things that are on the test, but not just those things. So, yeah, I, I, I agree with that.
Jody, did you wanna say anything? You kind of.
Chime in if you want.
Chime in. Um, do you wanna come to a microphone?
I can just talk wicked loud, I'm really good at it. Uh, so I just wanna add two things. Our scoring criteria and our proficiencies and our performance indicators are the key that hold all of those pieces together. Those were created by educators at each grade level, who then met with the grade levels below and above them to make sure that those skills scaffold and spiral up. And those skills are the things that we look at on the STAR 360s, um, test to say, oh, a child needs specific work in, uh, phonemical awareness. We're gonna work on that specific skill to look for growth. Those align with our performance indicators, and our STAR 360 is a, um, relatively good predictor of S-BAC.
Yep.
So we wanna teach to the classroom and the performance indicators first, but those, those should inform those secondary progress monitors. And just one more push, I fully agree with Bruce. During COVID, for various reasons, we had to go down to guaranteed and viable curriculum and let, uh, educators really focus on what their kids specifically needed. But coordinated curriculum is key to rigor and to making sure that every single student gets what they need. And so the, the entire release date plan next year, and this is from teachers create, filling out surveys and saying this is what they wanted. So it is not what administrators think, it is teacher voice. Will be them working in grade teams to create curriculum maps to start to make sure that district-wide, we are aligned in English, math, and science for next year with the addition of embedded global citizenship the next year.
That, and that's a good point. The coordinated curriculum has been huge on our minds as we are planning for next year, absolutely. Josh, did you have a question?
The, I have two questions that don't necessarily have to be considered right now, but maybe.
Yeah, you can.
If we are having declining enrollment, like if we have classrooms that are smaller. Does a, like, a few poor students, how, does that affect how we show up on the percentile? Or does it not matter because there's, it, it's still the same group that you're looking at? But if you have two that are performing on, does that, how does that change the number?
Fantastic question. When we look at percentiles, that's not in our district, that's not in our schools, that's actually nationwide. So those numbers, because, yes, small schools run into that problem if you say, oh, we lost, we lost one kid that was here, and one kid that was here, it skews the results a lot more. But when we do talk percentiles with this data, it's not gonna skew that much.
And the other question that I had that.
But I, let me, what will skew is proficiency. So if you, if what you're reporting is, these are the numbers of students we have proficient, you lose a kid or two, or you gain a kid or two, that can have a huge swing. So, you know, Tinmyth could have two students move, and then all of a sudden, your proficiency score goes from 30% to 50%. That's a big swing, and that, they're, that's very explainable by students just coming and going. Percentiles aren't gonna do that, though. But what we are currently looking at with our goals are the, those proficiency cut lines, so those can fluctuate. Yeah, that's a good question.
And then the other one is, um, do you have, like, the cohort that maybe when we started offering universal pre-K?
Yeah.
Like, what, what do we, what grade level is that? And do you see, is there anything that?
Yeah.
Is showing that there's a benefit to it? And if it's not, then?
You know, that's a.
What do we need to do about that?
That's a really good question. We have not looked into that, uh, we can look into that. I wonder if COVID would throw a big wrench in that.
Sure it would.
Because I think the universal pre-K, did we start four, five, three, three years ago? So three years ago, um, we, we have seen, and this has been a nationwide trend, too, early literacy really took a hit with COVID. Upper grades literacy didn't as much, and I think our S-BACs show that, mirror that. Early grades did, um, and then math did, too. Good question, because things like that, uh, paying attention to what, what we're doing, is it working? Makes tons of sense, especially with our pre-K program, which comes with a price tag, absolutely. Yep.
So I have a question in regards to, I think it's more our math S-BAC, and I know that 2021
Yep.
was when we were mostly home.
Yep.
For the school year.
Yep.
But why in fifth and sixth grade do we drop? What is the, what is the fifth, sixth, seventh grade issue? Not issue, but what is the factor right there?
That's great.
For math, not necessarily for reading, because reading, we hold pretty good.
Yep.
But it's our math.
Yep. I can't answer that for you right now, I'll look into that.
Can you?
Absolutely.
Because that may be something we need to work on.
And I don't know if that's a trend that we always see. We do tend to see a trend that scores dip in middle school.
Well, fifth grade's not middle school.
Oh, no, fair enough, fair enough.
Fifth, sixth, you're prepping for seventh, but then we're still not holding good for seventh.
Yep.
That would be, yeah, if we could maybe, because that may be something that we need to work on there.
I'll look into that, I'll see what I can figure out with that. And what I would ask the board, too, as we're trying to weave this into a conversation that happens a little more frequently, you know, instead of hour-long presentation, let's talk for 20 minutes, send me questions. If there's something that you want me to talk about at the next meeting, I'll look that up so we can talk about that at the next meeting. Uh, if other things pop into your head, like, hey, this didn't make sense, can you explain that a little better? And we will start to try and build, I think, a vocabulary so that I'm not just presenting to you, we're having conversations about the data, which is what we want our students and staff and admin to be doing. So why wouldn't we wanna do that, too? Instead of just me talking to you.
For another topic point, I think, on the point of like, looking at that class would be data that's basically like, here is when the, this group started third grade, here's what their test score in third grade, this is their test score in fourth.
Do you wanna follow the student?
So we can see.
Yeah, follow the grade, yes.
Go, go back, go back and look at the initial presentation I sent, and further on, I didn't do those tonight, because there were tons of them. We, we have tracked over cohort years.
Yeah.
And actually, we have at this point, a couple of cohorts where we can, we can follow that for four or five years now. And I put those with the state averages, too.
Yeah.
So you could kinda think about, you know, what did COVID do with this cohort? And then what did our students do with that cohort over five years? And we can, we can talk about that more, for sure. Yeah. Awesome.
Thank you.
I, I enjoy discussing this stuff, if you do, too, I'll, I'll bring more, absolutely.
What? I'm looking at 35, 42, 46, 44. Exactly what does that score give you?
That means the, the percentage of students who are considered proficient on the Smarter Balanced Assessment.
So none of these, except the two, part of half, 50%?
No, but you can, you can also look and see that state level, uh, are you looking at the reading?
I'm looking at reading, yeah.
Yeah. State level, you've got three grades that are above 50%. It's 51, 51, 54, that's statewide, yeah. That means half of our state, according to this assessment, is not proficient in reading.
I know, that's what I was looking at.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So our scores, even if they match the state scores.
Aren't great.
Are good.
Sure, sure. But then we're talking again about a lagging indicator. We're talking about something that we may not see those scores shift much, state level or school level, for a fair number of years.
But you should. Well, I mean, eventually.
Eventually.
If things get in place.
Yeah.
Then it should just be steady.
Yep.
Yeah, that's.
But, but I wonder if there's a day when every single kid in the state is proficient. I think the way the S-BAC is designed, it tells us something different. Can we have every single kid making growth? I think that's a goal that's more attainable, you know? But I hear you, Bruce, 50% scary, you know? Shouldn't it be more like 70, 80, 90%? But that's proficient. That's not necessarily literate. So talking about, you know, proficient, we set a high bar, we do. That was when Kneecap moved out and Smarter Balanced moved in. Part of the conversation around the Common Core and that assessment was the Common Core is setting a higher bar. And you could see, you could look at our scores on Kneecap for years back. Our scores on Kneecap didn't go too much any direction, they kinda were flat for about a decade or so. And then we switched to S-BAC, and instead of the scores being up here kinda flat, the scores are down here kinda flat. Lately, we've seen more declines, but initially, it really was an adjustment, you know? We were here on Kneecap. know? We were here on Kneecap, we're here on S-Back. And that was a recalibration just because it was a new test. So you could argue it's a higher bar. So you could argue that's why the numbers are lower. It doesn't mean that we can't do work to improve them. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't do work to improve them. It's just explaining where those numbers maybe came from. Are they good or bad? You, you tell me. I want to try and make sense of the numbers and get everybody's opinion.
What's worrisome is, you know, yes, growth is a wonderful thing, but unless we start to see growth that is above.
More than a year.
More than a year's growth, we never catch up.
Correct.
You know, and that's, that's, that's the worrisome part. And if we're seeing growth that's not even a full year, then that means really bad things, obviously.
And I will give you my opinion now. It's hopeful that coming out of pandemic, we see largely a year's worth of growth in all of our classrooms. We largely see that. That's hopeful.
So when do we get, like, I know S-Back.
Yep.
Summer.
Summer.
So we will have results. Okay. And that technically, we've been a full year in person, face-to-face. Yeah, in-person.
Hybrid schedules. Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, because this one is all.
The school where I, where I work, we have a different assessment than the STAR 360. And one of the indicators that we look at a lot is growth. And it actually has two indicators. It has basically a normalized growth, typical growth, and then a stretch growth. The concept being that if you're just doing normal growth, what you expect in one year, a student who is two grades behind in third, or grade behind in third grade, will be a grade behind in fourth grade. Whereas if you start working toward the stretch growth, someone who is one grade behind in third grade, hopefully by fourth, maybe fifth, we can get them proficient. So that's a. I always look at growth as one of the indicators that I really like to see how the school is doing.
And that's where we try to leverage our interventionists and things like that to support teachers in getting that more than a year's worth of growth. But we, yeah, we don't want to be okay with a year's worth of growth.
I guess that was my point.
Yeah.
It'll just be nice to see 2000.
You can be more blunt, Adrian.
Okay. All right. It'll be nice to see 22's results, just so we could look at, are we on the right page, going the right path for?
And I think it, it really informs our conversation around, let's talk to the community. What do they want? How do we measure it? What does that look like? You know, are we looking for stretch growth? Is that what we want? Is there something else we want too that tells us our students are good citizens? You know, what do we want? How are we going to hold ourselves accountable to doing the work in a way that we know that what we're trying is working, like our pre-K program? Is it working or not? We need to know that. Love, love the questions. Thank you.
For the, Brian, for the audience who watches this and for the notes, if any public wants to see this.
Oh, I'll get this in the minutes with Ann.
Okay, it'll be in the minutes with Ann. So I just wanted to make sure that they had access to it since it wasn't a presentation.
No. Great point.
Any last questions on data? Nope. Then we have bond project completion update.
You skipped board training options.
Oh, board training options. Andrea wasn't at the last meeting, so I don't know if I got to give her the heads up.
Uh, no. I haven't talked to you.
Okay. Um, I'm wondering, we want to do, Brian and I, I think we're talking about a summer retreat, something that is in parallel with the administration, so not together, but in parallel, so that we can sometimes be together, sometimes be apart. And then there was also some possibilities, both the, our consultant, when we did, the superintendent offered us some suggestions, and I know that the VSA has some suggestions. I think it would be a good idea for us to move forward with it, but I just don't know which one.
I have a question. There's new board training that apparently starts tomorrow from VSA. I wasn't sure if anybody had availed themselves of that. I just wanted to mention it.
Okay, so there's new board training?
You just have to sign up.
Sign up. Okay. So what's the best way to move forward with, again?
I was supposed to contact Phil Gore, and I have not yet because I wasn't really sure what, I mean, this was in terms of, of a board retreat, not board training per se. I think.
Well, what happened in board training, do we want to do like maybe a quick subcommittee to look at this?
I think that'd be good.
To look at these options for the summer that we want to play with? Because I don't think doing it as a full board is the best.
Yeah. And I don't feel quite.
Our subcommittees don't do too well this year.
Well, we can talk about that, too. But I think this, this has to have an end because I think this summer, we want something done this summer. That's the impression I'm getting, that we need, we would like some type of official training and.
Well, I will at least write to Phil Gore right now and ask what options he can present as a full board.
Len, what's up?
Yeah. If you remember the last meeting we had, when we met as a board, and it was a good meeting. We didn't have any input from the School Boards Association. We didn't have any input from it. We did it as a board. And I think that's the way we need to do it moving forward. You know, we, whether we set up how it works, I don't know. But we can take care of it as a board. We're okay. We can move forward. And I know some people would like to say, well, no, we're all split, divisive. No, we're not at all. And that meeting proved that because we went through the whole goal setting and it was a piece of cake. It's just setting aside the time to do it. And I know that's hard for all of us. So.
Len, I'm mixed on that one because I, one of my best experiences when I first came on is when we had the consultant come in and do the vision and mission statement with us. And we did that over several, several times. So, and I've had good experiences with just the board. So I'm mixed on that one, to be honest.
I'm concerned that it gives, it puts an awful lot of responsibility on somebody to, to prepare a meeting like that. And, and I'm not sure if that's, if that's the best way to go. I mean, just sort of having a free and loose meeting. It worked well when we had a document to use as our format. And we worked through that document and we had really great discussions on where to go on those goals because we had something to start from. And I'm not sure, like in a strategic plan, if we have that same, we have that same background without somebody doing a fair amount of work to, to prepare for the meeting. And I mean.
If you're talking about bylaws and things, they're in place. We just need.
No, I'm talking about strategic goals for the.
Strategic goals.
From, based on, on our goals and how, how the district will move forward. I mean, I.
Well, I'm wondering, I'm one, Brian, actually, I would like your input on this one. Because I know goals is one of the things that we want to revisit, especially with a major turnover in administration, you included.
Well, we wanted to bring the public into it. That's, that's where, I mean, and that, that's a big job to orchestrate a meeting where we bring the public in and, and, and we're able to, to keep the meeting corralled so that you don't have just people, you know, stating all sorts of different ideas. If you have somebody running it, and I think we probably could do it, but it would take a lot of preparation. I don't know if anybody on the board has the energy or, or, or the desire to do that.
So why can't we pull in what we did for the superintendent search?
That's what I was suggesting.
Oh, sorry. I must have, sorry. Sorry. Yes. Good thought. That, I think, has all, so that has always been my thought, when BJ and I had talked about it a long time ago too, was pull somebody in to do this, to help us.
Facilitator.
Yes, because.
Not to give us the ideas and not, but to facilitate.
Just be a mediator or a facilitator or whatever.
Keep us on track.
So that way we can actually be productive and have, you know, whatever our goal for that meeting and make sure that it sticks to that. And then we have that and it's not one of us trying to facilitate and gather everything, you know, for the, that meeting. We need to start outsourcing a little bit.
We, we need a consultant from the VSA.
Yes. Or somewhere.
Or somewhere. I think, I think.
For our goals?
Well, I, you know.
Why not?
I, I think it important that the board discuss, I mean, Brian and Jody and, you know, frankly, our, our classroom teachers, our building administrators and our district leadership, they know better than anyone, you know? They can inform our goals better than anyone or provide feedback better than anyone. And so I think it important that we look at the current goals and their current iteration and get input from school leadership to say, you know.
And public.
Yes.
Well, so hold on.
For our next step.
I'm wondering, I completely agree, and I'm just wondering how that would look.
Yep.
Right? So as a first order of business, I would like to have the conversation with school leadership and then, you know, consult with, with someone who, I don't know who that would be, but someone who can guide us through the process of eliciting, soliciting, broader input and feedback. Honestly, we might want students to participate in this.
We do have student reps for a reason.
Right. And they're really active ones. And we have class officers. You know, our class officers are our class leaders. So.
And students have great feedback around whether they felt prepared when they left from school or not.
Absolutely. That's important data. And.
You need to know that.
Right. And so someone outside of this group with the expertise to inform what that would look like, I think we should seek.
I want to start with, I think it'd be best to start with our administration. Because like I said, one of the things, when we went through our goals last time, one of the things I was never comfortable about was, is the goal I'm setting feasible for our school system?
But also, and, right.
And is it correct for our school system? And that's, and it's our administration that has to align that. And that's why I'm looking at Brian and saying, okay, please let me know where your thought processes, especially with the huge turnaround around in administration.
Sure.
Do we need the outside help? Do, does the administration need to do something first? Where, I'm thinking more of timeline.
Sure. I, I think if we're, if we're wanting to do something quickly, then having somebody come in who has experience and can guide the process would make it more efficient. I don't think it would constrain us as a group. I think it would, it would keep us efficient, if that makes sense. I don't think, you know, a facilitator is different from somebody who comes in and is leading the work. So we don't want somebody leading the work. We want a facilitator. Just like, you know, trying to run the meeting and take notes at the same time, good luck, you know? Trying to run the meeting and be a participant, I think is, is, you know, if we're mindful of what we're looking for, I think we could find somebody who's a neutral facilitator but has the experience and the background to say, you know, oh, if you want to do that, here's a really good direction to go so that you can do that. But which direction do you want to go? I, I think we can find that middle ground probably. If we want to take a year to do this, I was, and Len, I didn't mention the extern personnel. I should have. I met with the VSA today and we were talking about lining up a mentor. So they, they have some information from me and they're going to seek out some mentors. And what I requested of them was a mentor that I don't know, because I think there's a lot of value in working with somebody I don't know.
Interesting. Okay.
Versus a mentor that I do know.
Good for you.
And too super comfortable to work with.
Yes, yes, yes. So I've requested a mentor that I don't know. And one of the things I requested was somebody who has good experience with accountability and strategic planning. I'm not going to sit down with that person and learn that in August, you know? So if this is something that we want to run ourselves, I would be more than willing to try and lead that process. I can't do that this summer, you know, just being open about that. That's learning that I have to do. If we pulled somebody in to do that work, that would be learning that I'd get a jumpstart on. So that, that's my opinion. That's, that's where I am with that.
Okay. I'd like to, to know what it's going to cost.
Sure.
To pull somebody in.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Because if it's prohibitive, I'm not for it. I'm not going to throw thousands of dollars out for something that we've got talent to do.
No, yes.
My initial thought on it personally is, we have such a new administration and I think we can do even better with our goals. I do want, I think it'd be best for this, get in the routine of doing this yearly. So it may not be this year, whether we do the admin or not, but I think at some points, that would be good to just give us a good reset on, okay, now we have a good outline, now we have the good document, it's going to be very efficient to what Len has been pointing out of, now we can just kind of update these things. Do, what would we need to at least follow what Bruce said, find out what the costs are and what we would get for our money? What do we need to move forward with that?
I would think those are two easy things we can get from somebody who knows what they're doing, a cost and a.
I did just send an email to, to the VSA guy, just to ask what they can offer, given what we were just talking about, and, and ask for costs.
I think if we have that, we can start thinking about a decision.
I'm, I'm also wondering if there are folks at UVM in the education department or folks at Castleton.
I'm sure there are.
Yeah, who would want to collaborate, consult.
Oh, it's not working.
Okay, so.
Castleton, yeah.
So at our next.
I can, I can talk to Rick. Do you know Rick Rudin?
Okay, I know Rick.
Yeah.
So Andrea, Adrian, Brian, do you think you can get together to present options, I guess, and what that does for the next meeting?
Yeah, I think we can probably do that. Yep.
Len, when we come to agenda building, we still haven't looked at the bylaws. So I think we, it's something we still need to look at soon too. But before the summer, or maybe this summer, I don't know.
That might have to be the summer. I'm just thinking with all of our hiring, we might not want to add too much to our plate.
It's going to keep us busy. That's true.
Yeah, so.
I think it's important, you look at the bylaws because that's what got us into trouble a lot too long ago.
Yeah. I mean, that may be just another hour meeting beforehand like we did with the other.
I, I think we've pretty much gone through them. I have.
Pretty darn close.
Yeah, I think we're close enough that if we just do a PD, we can at least check that off the list.
But I also think there's some things we need to look at in terms of forums and how many people, I have concerns about eight board members being in a committee meeting. Does that make a forum? But that's for later, Nick.
So Adrian and Andrea and Brian, I'm tasking that with you three to come up with something for options. And that's addressing the summer retreat. Len, I think when we took up agenda building, maybe we can look at that as a PD item before the next meeting. So don't let me forget that. Any other things that anybody wants to say about this?
We meet with Brian.
Yeah.
We'll set up.
There's something for later.
Okay, we got something for later.
Bring it to the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, wait, I just want to, I missed part of that. But Brian, can you just like, send your availability to Adrian and I?
Yes.
And kind of we'll do it that way?
Yes.
For scheduling? Okay. Instead of us just trying, because we know you're busy.
Throwing stuff out there?
Yeah.
We'll do. I'll send you.
You probably have the worst schedule.
Yeah, you probably.
I'll send you what I got.
Thank you.
That's 15 minutes here and there.
Somewhere you have the one I forwarded to you right from Jackie Wilson.
Yeah, somewhere.
If you can't find it, let me know. And I will look somewhere too.
Notes that I took for that.
It's on your counter, right?
That, that kitchen table note, yeah.
That filing cabinet of a kitchen table. Yes.
Yeah, it's great.
I never throw pieces of paper away until I look at them.
I don't either, but they might be mixed in some bills.
Okay. Moving on, bond project completion update.
Okay. So we have an update on bonds that we have had in the past. Those are done. Those are completed. And the board just needs to sign off on those. Stan had sent a sheet outlining costs and expenditures and how that, how that worked out. Did anybody have questions on any of that? At this point, it's signing off that the bond projects are completed. And we can get signatures after the meeting. signatures after the meeting.
It's exciting.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, I wonder, is it worth a motion to?
Approve.
Approve that we sign off on these?
Sure.
I think it couldn't hurt. Stan didn't ask for that, but I think it couldn't hurt.
Doug, you want to make that motion?
I move that we accept the information from Stan on finishing our, um, here we go.
Bond obligations?
Bond obligations. They are complete and we, I move that we sign those off.
I'll second that.
Cool. And I'm assuming that's for both bond obs- observations that we have up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then we have a second. Any discussion?
Nope.
And call the vote? Unanimous. Okay. We've done the school tour and we knocked that off anyways. Uh, committee reports, we have negotiations.
Um, I hope that things are moving forward. Um, there's been lots of discussion on the support staff piece and we'll have a meeting with them on Monday. And this group is, our, the negotiation group is meeting for a half an hour before that meeting so that we can sort of get all back on this, so that we all have the same information. And I believe the teachers are voting on the agreement tonight or to, is it tonight? Okay.
They picked tonight, yep.
Okay. So hopefully we'll be able, if they approve it, then we'll, I'll, I'll bring it to us the next meeting on the eighteenth. Is it the eighteenth?
Yep.
Okay. Which would be great.
Okay. Personnel, Len.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, a bunch of stuff, sorry. Uh, I'm trying to go through it pretty quickly. Um, in terms of new hires and approval of contracts, we have a, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a contract for Leonard Bartonstein as an English teacher, one point O full-time equivalency.
I'll second it. Um, any discussion about the one point O full time?
Just repeat the motion so we can.
Yes, uh, he made a motion for Leonard.
Bartonstein.
Bartonstein.
Not Leonard, just that, just sorting it out.
Yep. Um, for one ti- one point O full-time.
Equivalency.
Equivalency E L A teacher at Mill River. We had a first and second, all in favor. You're unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Next one is a, a couple of stipends. First is for Jody Stewart Rock. Her position as Director of Curriculum Instruction and Equity. We have also asked her to take on some administrative duties and responsibilities. And so at this point, I would, uh, make a motion to, uh, fulfill the stipend re- stipend for thirty five, thirty-five hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Liz seconded it. The motion was to approve a stipend for Jody Stewart Rock for thirty-five hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Um, for extra duties because of the internship, interim superintendent duties that she took over.
Yeah, it's all brand as well.
Yep. Blame, blame it on me.
Okay, um, any discussion about that? None? I'm going to call the vote for you. All in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Jody says thank you.
Uh, next one is a stipend for Brian Hill.
It's crazy.
As Assistant Superintendent and also adding on to his job description as Interim Superintendent. So I'd like to make a motion to approve a stipend for ten thousand dollars for Brian Hill.
I'll second that.
Liz seconded it. Um, just to speak out loud, that was a stipend for ten thousand dollars for Brian Hill for the interim, interi- I cannot say. Interim Superintendent, uh, duties that he had to take on. And any discussion? Andrea, do you want to mention a couple, how the money, you worked on pointing these? I'm sorry, I should have done this a little bit beforehand, but do you want to go and talk about that just quickly?
Do you want to approve it while we're in mid-prove and then I can go through it?
Well, we're in the discussion part.
Okay. So what happened was I requested from Brian the duties that Jody had taken on, uh, on addition to her regular position. Um, and then when I obtained that and Brian gave me a percentage, I then met with Stan, um, on the numbers. So Stan and I met for over an hour on, um, going through percentage and more. We had kind of discussed with the board that we were thinking of doing like a hundred dollars a day and there was about a hundred days that you guys had obtained that position, um, or had filled in for the interim. And I think that had gone until June thirtieth and stuff. So then Stan and I just kind of crunched it and I actually asked a lot of questions. Sorry, Stan, if you're on. Um, just in regards to, because we had so much money left from Dave's, um, position and, um, kind of making sure the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted and everything because I don't want anybody to come back and say, okay, well, there was fifty-eight thousand dollars left from Dave's position. We only allotted thirty-five hundred to Jody and ten thousand to Brian for stipend amounts. What's happening to the rest of it? Because as I come from a very numbers background and along with Stan, you're, you're going to get audited, you're going to look at all of that. So Stan explained that that money that's left over from the fifty, sorry, I don't have figures. My brain's fried on math today. That money does, goes back into the budget for two thousand and twenty-three. So that money will be kind of like a little purse for us if we need for an emergency thing or we, um, had to cover something extra or we get the chance to maybe hire another pair of educator back, just some of those examples that way.
Or, or something that might happen frequently would be somebody switches to a family plan, healthcare or things like that that pop up and are unbudgeted.
Yes, something, so that money is not available to us now. It is available then and then it gets kind of tucked back so that we have it as like an emergency purse where we need to allot it. So, um.
That's what the.
We're going to make, yeah, documentation and notes of where that is so that people can see that and, um, people will know where our money has gone.
Sorry, I should have started with that one, but.
That's okay.
Okay. That said, if there's no, if there's any other further discussion at all, I'm going to call the vote. Okay, I'm going to call the vote for the ten thousand dollar stipend for Brian and his extra duties. Looks unanimous.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Jody.
Thank you, Brian, very much, by the way. Um, I got a couple more, like three. Shrewsbury Principals position, and Brian, you can jump in here at any time. Um, they're interviewing this week, Thursday?
Yep, tomorrow.
Up at Shrewsbury, three candidates, um, we'll see where that goes. Do you want to comment on that at all?
I, I will share. I think the committee is excited about the folks that they're interviewing and we hope we have some information to share soon. So hopefully, hopefully by our next personnel committee, uh, we'll see.
Okay. And then, uh, as I'm sure folks are aware, uh, we are going to have a need for a principal at Mill River Union High School. And, um, Brian and I have discussed it, sort of, our plan is to go through the same process that we've done on the others to a certain extent, um, where Brian and I will sit down and go through the original applicants and, um, hopefully, and we're looking at next week or soon after that. And then we come up with some folks and then we narrow it down. And then at that point, we look at moving it forward and we're looking at, as I say, a similar process. Folks may not, may or may not remember when we hired, um, the, the previous Mill River principal, we had three groups. We had a board and teacher group, we had a parent group and we had a student group. And so we're looking at something similar to that, um, in terms of moving forward with that. But at this point, the, the position has been posted, we have some applicants and that's where we're at.
Yeah, so a quick recap, I think is that's moving forward and it looks like we're going to have more panels than we've had for like the Shrewsbury one.
Yeah, yeah.
Moving forward with that one. And it has to, seems like it has to move pretty quickly so that we can keep our options open.
Yeah, yeah. And that depends upon obviously. And, and actually, uh, Brian, Brian and I had a discussion in terms of advertising on the educational leadership.
Newsletter.
Association.
Yep.
Do you want to share that?
Excuse me. Yeah, opportunity presented itself for an advertisement that would hit a lot of administrators across the state. Uh, so we, we made a decision to advertise that. It was two hundred dollars and we have an advertising budget. So it seemed like a reasonable thing to do, uh, when we are later in the game than Clarendon and Shrewsbury and the applicant pool is smaller at this point. We saw applicants come in a little faster for those when we did those. Uh, so I think it's, it's worth going that extra bit to see if we can generate some more interest.
Any questions there?
Did we accept Tyler's resignation? Yeah, because the last meeting, we didn't, because, no, Andrea just brought that up.
We probably should at the next personnel meeting. Yep.
Okay, oh, we do it.
I'm sorry, Brian.
Okay.
We should accept a resignation from the current principal at our next personnel meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. We can, we can do that.
Yep. And then the last thing is we've also advertised for tech coordinator, um, position. And we just, Brian, again, Brian asked me and I felt that it was fine to get that position out there. Um, and so it is out there and we received a couple of that.
And just so the board knows and the public knows, I am one of those applicants. So I did apply for the tech director position.
Yeah. And, and for that reason, I will be recusing myself from the process and the decision-making on that because I think it, it doesn't make sense for me to be choosing that person when a board member is throwing their, their hat in the ring, so to speak.
So, so I would ask anybody with any technological information or expertise, please get in touch with me.
Yes, they are.
So I can have some idea. I mean, I, I, we'll be fine. We're good. Brian and I have talked about it. We have some hopes in the district that are going to help us. Um, and, and I understand and I appreciate B J, you recusing yourself and I appreciate you, Brian, also stepping aside. But that leaves us without any expertise in terms of hiring. So we'll work on that. But, but that's out there and we have.
And, and we do have a Vermont Teacher of the Year in District who has some expertise that I'm sure we could.
Have we talked about that?
Bet we could twist her arm. Yep. I know she's busy, but I bet we could twist her arm.
There's another school board member that has a lot of tech expertise too.
Yep, absolutely.
You might want to.
We do?
Sam.
Ah, okay. Cause I was going to say, I know it ain't me.
Sam and I have had conversations.
Says, says the board member on a computer.
I know, I'm trying. Yeah.
So at this point, uh, I am done in terms of personnel. Our next meeting is June first at six o'clock.
Okay. And we are now on to policy.
B J, I need your help. So we had a meeting, April, something, I can't remember now. Um, and we discussed the two policies that were brought to our attention. The, um, I have them. The E fifteen bonus payments to staff and the D seven, um, the special ed. And.
We moved them to a first reading.
We moved them to a first read and then I got an email from Ann saying that they.
We were a little late.
We were, yeah, late on publishing them for, in the Herald for the public. So that may just push us back a little bit on sending it.
So we'll do, we'll do next board meeting that we look at those to make sure we have the 10 days that we're supposed to.
Yep.
And that's, part of that's, uh, my fault, absolutely. As I'm figuring out, uh, the things that, working with Ann, Ann is fantastic and Ann covers a lot of things, but knowing the things that I'm supposed to bug her and say, oh, hey, this happened last night, can you do this? Um, I'm still sorting through all of those. So it's my fault, it was a few days late.
Slipped on it too, so.
Hey, all, all good.
So yeah, that will come on the May twentieth at our next, hopefully at our next board. Well.
It was published, so they should be one of, it should be available to be approved.
For the twentieth. If not, we'll have to push it to June eighteenth. Eighteenth, sorry. I don't know why I have the twentieth stuck in my head.
Don't know.
Um, and then another thing we discussed at policy was actually running through all of the policies and figuring out, um, our actual spreadsheet and our, our records. Like, we just need to do a little clarification and kind of make things, um, a little more tweaked, I guess. So that's going to probably be a couple of meetings, just trying to focus on that part of it. But we will also, you know, do any policies that come up in the meantime that we need to deal with. And our next meeting is May tenth at five thirty. Right? Yeah, second Tuesday, yes.
I really need to bring my laptop. Looks like easier.
Okay, so our next one?
May tenth.
May tenth. Cool.
At five thirty.
Okay, our next committee, uh, chair just stepped out, but it sounds like he passed on the work.
The.
Building the ground.
The building and ground update is there is nothing to report, but the, Doug is in the process of scheduling a June meeting and he'll have an update by the next board meeting.
Alrighty. Community engagement, we don't have a Sam and I never got an update. So I don't have, does, was anybody at the last meeting?
No meeting since.
No, I don't think we have. No, it's, it's on the tenth.
On Monday.
Yeah. But there was a community conversation.
Oh, was anybody there?
Oh, it got canceled. Okay, sorry.
The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, I think.
So they're prob- they're usually around policy, so.
Policy.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, we're now on to the finance.
Oh, that's me. Good evening, everyone. Uh, we have the following pay orders and pay warrants for approval. Uh, for payroll, we have regular payroll dated April twenty-second in the amount of five hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-six cents. We have regular payroll dated April twenty-ninth in the amount of six thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-two cents for a grand total of five hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. For pay orders, we have from the general, general fund, a pay order in the amount of seventy-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. From officials and Diamond Turf, we have a pay order in the amount of four thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars. Also from the general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and twenty-four cents. From our after-school program, we have a pay order in the amount of one thousand, three[1751.54] our after-school program, we have a pay order in the amount of one thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-six cents. From our lunch program, we have a pay order in the amount of one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents for a grand total of ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. From our student activity accounts from Mill River, we have a pay order in the amount of one hundred and eighty-three dollars and fourteen cents. And from Tinmouth Elementary, we have a pay order in the amount of one hundred and four dollars for a total of two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. And I move that we accept and approve these pay orders and this payroll as presented.
A second.
Any discussion?
No, nothing, nothing any soft, near usual. It's uh, it's fine there. I have the other one to look for, the, the payroll ones I haven't had a chance to look through. But I'll, I will, if there's anything, we'll let everybody know.
Alrighty, with all of those in favor of accepting and approving the payroll and pay orders as presented, please raise your hand. Thank you, everybody, and that was unanimous. Uh, the next meeting of the finance committee is May twenty-third at five P M.
Okay, we have the two ad hoc committees. Um, Len, I'm gonna start off with yours. If I remember correctly, the last meeting, I was seeing how we could wrap this up and whether or not some of the things that have been going on might fulfill the accomplishments? I don't know if you got an update of that.
Yeah, and, and I hear you. I think, um, I'll be home Monday and I think one of the things that Matt and I need to do is sit down um next week and talk about where, because our, our committees have sort of overlapped. And, and um, we were talking about having Jody come in and talk to us. So I think with what, and again, I haven't talked to Matt about this, so he's probably going to talk about. Um, but I think it's important that the two of us get together because we're both looking at um, what do I want to say? Uh, questionnaires kind of thing and narrow it down and then just do one or whatever, maybe only one. And, and Jody was gonna sit down with us and try to help us with that. So I, that's where I'm going forward next week.
He's gonna meet with you.
How's that for an update?
Can, can I ask a question? Matt, were you doing a questionnaire?
That was one of the things we talked
I threw everybody else in there.
We talked about doing to see what type of a display out of a couple of
Oh, okay. So, but there was also that overlap with the community engagement committee because I was confused. But that makes sense. Okay, thanks.
So, yeah, there's a lot of overlap with our meetings. So, and I know as Chair, I'm gonna say, we really should wrap those up by the end of the year as to what's going on.
Yep, I agree.
Um, so I'm gonna throw it. Do you have any other updates other than what maybe Len just said?
Other than, other than the last time Len and I had talked, we were kind of waiting to finish up the superintendent search and have him come back from um South Carolina. So he's gonna be back on Monday. So we'll, I'll get Josh involved here in one of the committees and we'll get all of us together.
So maybe invite Sam, um, Jody.
But I'd like to have a substantial update by the next board meeting on the eighteenth.
Yeah. And I think it's okay to say that.
We will have it updated.
Yeah. And I think it's okay if we can say that, okay, we're gonna pass that thing off to the engagement thing. You know, just where's, where's it going?
Board direction.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, anything else for the ad hoc committees? No? Okay, transact any other legal business?
This isn't legal business, but I think we should say congratulations for Karen McCullough, our student or teacher of the year for spending a week in DC.
Yep. Some really cool pictures. If you didn't see him look on Mill River High School Facebook page.
Yep. With all sorts of important people that we all recognize.
Think we should acknowledge that she brought it right there and represented us.
Mm-hmm.
Very well, from the looks of it. Um, I also wanted to know if we wanted to put on the books some kind of, we had talked about doing um like a, a meet the new teachers and all that. We somehow, you know, sometimes if we get it actually scheduled, it might actually happen, even if it's not until, you know, August, for beginning of September. I just wanted to keep putting it out there.
So we can really see it, put a face to who are approved.
Well, remember, we had that very nice um get-together a few years ago where, where we, we got to meet all the new teachers and some of the teachers that had been there who, you know, everybody was invited. And it was really very nice. I mean, I think it, I don't know how many of the elementary schools took part in that, but it would be great if we were very um, you know, encouraging that elementary staff comes, too.
I, I think they all did. I think it was everybody.
Some of them did, but I guess
We just, we were at the high school, but I think a lot of them came.
They're probably just were outnumbered.
Maybe.
Freshmen.
I think there was something else going on, so it was easy for them to
We did.
Gotten in.
Okay, it was very nice. I just want to keep mentioning it.
Our mentor coordinator who works a lot with our new folks, Deborah Gardner-Bosh, I'll email her and just so that she's aware that we're thinking about that. She can help coordinate on that end, too.
Well, I think if we set it up ahead of time, a day, then that makes it easier to make sure we follow the
Yep. Um, I want to say thank you, teachers. Uh, I know, I even, we sent out the cards. I got them to the school and I even got some thank yous back from them, but this has been a hard, hard year on the educational system in general. And I know from the district I work in, teachers came into this year thinking it was going to be a whole lot better than it was. And it turned into probably one of the hardest years to be a teacher.
It's still hard.
It's still hard. Um, and I think administration, too, with all the sickness that's been going around, um, I'm assuming Mill River's suffering from the same shortage of subs that the school district I work in
Yep.
Um, has been dealing with. And I've seen a lot of educators step up and fill in the roles. Um, so thank you. This board thanks you. This parent thanks you. So I do, I did want to say that out. Okay, um, agenda building. I have a meet the teachers and a policies, Brian.
Yep.
Uh, anything else?
And maybe the, the, the contract. If, if the teachers approve it, I'll make sure that everybody gets it with time to read it because it's sort of dense reading.
And you want uh, um, an update on training options, right? We're gonna have that for the next board meeting. Or I'm not gonna call it training options. I'll say retreat options.
Sounds good.
Yes, and if we haven't met by then, then at least have an update of the one we're going to meet.
Okay. Um, did you want another fifteen, twenty minutes to talk about data and pick up where we left off?
I would.
Yeah, it was fascinating. Yeah.
BJ, can I ask you to repeat that? I'm sorry, Beth.
Um, he was gonna say another fifteen minutes for data.
Okay.
That was gonna happen.
Um, I'm gonna request, can we have a six o'clock meeting for, to try and polish those bylaws up?
Because there's no policy or, sorry, no personnel meeting.
Yep.
Um, it would be in person at our next building.
And I'm wondering if you want some principal updates before the year is wrapped up?
Yes.
Or as the year's wrapped up? So before the year, I think Clarendon would make sense and that's our next meeting. If you wanted one after, I'd say Wallingford made sense and that's the last one. Not that we don't love Shrewsbury and Tinmouth, but that to get everybody up here for those reports, I'd, I'd want to honor their time and have it at Clarendon or Wallingford. I'm hearing it sounds like Clarendon on the eighteenth. Is a better time for principal updates?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Um, are we splitting principal updates and other admin updates?
Yeah, alternating those. Yeah. We can, we can do that. We haven't been in a pattern. We really haven't done admin updates uh officially in the last couple of months. We just haven't. We've been given updates on topics. We haven't been given just broad, hey Coral, tell us everything you're working on, updates, if that makes sense.
Be nice to end the year like that, you know, get some building.
Would you like that at the Wallingford meeting then? That's, that puts it a couple meetings out, but
But closer to the end of the year.
I'm one, I'm wondering if we split it. So principals one time, then Coral and other admin, Coral, Jody, and everybody else. Yeah. What do you guys think about that one?
I
Can we do that on a consistent basis?
Yes.
Can we split them?
Well, and something I, something I'd like to talk about, too, and this is maybe a good retreat conversation, thinking about what are the things you want at certain points of time in the year. So we're not always figuring, what do we do in next meeting? That it's a little more set. We had that with admin and principal updates, but we didn't have that with much else. Thinking about when do the data conversations happen in there? When do the updates, when is the sports one in there? Is that a quarterly? Like, that shouldn't just be when we ask for it. It should be something that's planned and regular and we know. So I think there are things I'm probably missing right now that go into that schedule, but that might be a good retreat kind of conversation. The work that we're doing, what makes sense for reporting throughout the year to, to sustain and support that work?
Um, sorry, I'm thinking about the six o'clock thing. Sorry about this, Len. Our next meeting's at Clarendon, am I correct?
Correct, eighteenth.
The reason why it's at Clarendon is there's an event going on before the meeting. So what time is that event going on?
Math night is at five. It's five to seven.
Five to seven.
So if you wanted to see what they were doing, the public part of it, you could come early at maybe five-thirty, maybe five. You could roam around and see the wonderful things that they're doing. Then you could do the six o'clock bylaws. Then you could do seven o'clock meeting. That's a late meeting night for all of you. It's possible, but you could do it. So it's up to you.
If we're at Clarendon, we have
I'm sorry, we're talking um, May
Eighteen.
I can't get there at five.
Next one.
May eighteen.
So, Len, what is your thoughts on that one? That's a long meeting.
If you really want to see what's going on at Clarendon.
Because we don't have personnel.
I mean, it is the appropriate one because we don't have personnel, so.
And I will actually be there.
Yeah.
Is my plan unless we get killed to death or tornado. But other than that, we can.
So reminder, there is an event going on. That's why we chose it.
BJ, should we post that on, on the um agenda? So that folks know there's actually something going on even before we meet?
Just a little note on the agenda. We can, we can figure out how to put a nice little informational note when we get that out. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. That's good thought. Yeah.
Anything else for the agendas?
Yeah, I do. Sorry.
Okay, Len?
Well, and Brian and I have talked about this. Um, I really think it's important that moving forward, and, and I'm not talking about next week or next month or whatever, but over the summer and, and Brian has thought this would be a good idea as well. I think we need to, we as board need to have some idea of what the structure is in terms of who's responsible for who. And I go back to when we okayed um salaries for administrators and um Maria at the time and, and Bruce said, how can we approve these when we don't have any um evaluations? So I think it's important that we take the time to, to look at how we do evaluations, who evaluates who and who is responsible for who in terms of uh administrative structure, I guess is what I'd say. Brian, it, help me out here.
That's clear to some people in some places, but all of it's not clear to everybody. So I think it's reasonable work to do to think about organizational structure, who oversees whom and, and really thinking about how, how can we strengthen that evaluation system? Yeah. I think that, that is wonderful work. And I think what you said, Len, was like a retreat thought or a summer thought, that that would be something we'd be bringing to the board way in the future. Uh, but before the year starts, before the year starts next year, we need to have that clarity.
Um, should, when should we start scheduling that summer retreat? That, like I said?
I wonder if we do some agenda building for the retreat after we figure out the options and what we want to do.
Okay, so the options are
Is that reasonable?
Oh, we have the options. That needs to get added, doesn't it?
I got that. I got that. Yep. So for next meeting, I've got, we, our policies will have cleared those two. We will hopefully have contract approval for the teachers bargaining unit. Quick data conversation, principal updates. That's what I have for next meeting. Other items we talked about, I've got maybe for further along in the future.
Do meet the teachers, do we want to try and schedule that or do we need to have any conversation with that?
Well, I think we can do that, you know.
Exo window type of year.
Yeah. And we could maybe do that on the first or on the fifteenth, that we don't have to get it done on the eighteenth, that we can try and spread that out.
On the next meeting, can we have an update from Deborah Bosch?
On, oh.
Coordinating that?
Yeah. I guess I wouldn't expect much to be coordinated yet. Because we, um, as of
Or at least an idea of what she says. Maybe do it, you know, in August sometime or
Yeah, yeah, that, that we can do. I can get, and I sent her an email. I can get from her a thought around what would be the best way to try and schedule it and plan it to make sure folks can be there. So I'll maybe have a thought around scheduling what it
If we do it in August, some people will still be on vacation and
Yeah, yeah. And Brian, make, make sure you make a note that we want a six, six o'clock
bylaws meeting. Yeah, okay. Cool.
This is the part we got one.
Okay. Anything else? It's eight-thirty-seven. Um, I say we adjourn by consensus?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.